Welcome to the January 3 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Grumhaus.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Woodman.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Luby.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Eight present, zero absent. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Birdy. Will you please join me in a pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to a new year. Our first order of business this evening is reports of city officers, first being the comments by Mayor. I do have three items this evening. The first item is an approval of the Gorton Center Commission appointments. And I'll read the names of those individuals. It's Mike Lay will be the chairman, Blair Nagels lay us on to the foundation, our Alderman John Luby, Mark Ventling, Mark Westcott, and I believe the last one is John Dixon. Is that correct?
Right.
And I know, I just want to thank Bob Kiley, our city manager, for all the work that he's put forth to really put Gorton Center in the right place that it's in today and kind of straighten the ship. Done an excellent job, and this group has done an excellent job. And I know with this now, with the new appointments, you're well on your way to improving it even more. And I know that we're already in a great place from where we were just a few months ago. So I thank you, and the community thanks you for all your hard work and efforts. They've certainly paid off. And with that, entertain a motion to approve the appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I might just add at this point, too, that at the January 18 city council meeting, we are expecting representatives of the new Gorton Board and Lake Forest Bank and Trust to be before you to give you some exciting news, which will make it even better than it is right now.
I think I have a hint at that, but we're very excited to publicly announce that, and I think that's great. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is an appointment of Nancy Carey to the Senior Resource Commission to fill the unexpired term of Roger Moore. As stated on the agenda, the copy of the volunteer profile sheet is enclosed on page five if you wish to look at that. With that, entertain again a motion for approval of this new appointment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Motion carries.
Can I mention one item? Or, I don't know, Alderman Novit, as you know, and she's in the audience, Marge Berta will be retiring from us and will, I think, she's coming to the January 18 meeting officially for your resolution, I think, at that point, aren't you, Marge?
No, I'm not telling, sorry.
Oh, okay. So she's retiring and immediately going on vacation. So maybe the first one of February, but we have, with the assistance of Paul Lemieux, the chairman of the commission, who's in the audience this evening, and Kent Novit, we have gone through the interview process for Marge's replacement. We have made a selection. I can't announce officially tonight because we're still waiting for the letter from that person. We will hopefully have the announcement and that person at your January 18 or first meeting of February as well. But I think I speak for Paul and Kent that we, Marge has got big shoes to fill, but we've found a very good candidate to fill those shoes.
And we definitely thank you, Marge, for all your hard work and effort. You've done an outstanding job, and we know we're going to miss you, but we also know you're not going too far away, so we can, we know where to find you. But thank you for all your work. My last comment this evening is to direct the city manager to form an ad hoc cultural quarter task force. And this is, this will be a task force managed under the city manager. It will be an opportunity to create a five to seven member ad hoc task force to explore the redevelopment opportunities and benefits that might be realized by the relocation of the Historical Society to the Gorton Community Center. As we mentioned earlier, late last year, that the Historical Society is looking at moving to the Gorton Community Center, and this will provide the opportunity to explore some of the opportunities that we may have to redevelop the current Historical Society property. Obviously, we have a close proximity to the library, so there, obviously, we'd look for individuals that may serve both with the library and any other redevelopment opportunities in the downtown area. So we look forward to having Bob put that task force together, and my understanding that that will be managed under your direct report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, one of the things that we are going to be working on diligently in 2011 is working with the city attorney. We've been a little informal in the past in the appointment of some of these boards and commissions and task force and ad hoc committees, and we're going to be a little more diligent in articulating exactly which of these are committees of the city council and appointed by the mayor and the city council, and which are more informational and task force that will be working with the city manager and staff. And there is a big distinction under the Illinois Open Meetings Act in terms of publishing notices and minutes and all those kinds of things. So this one clearly will be a committee of the city manager, and as I said, be reporting back to the council with a report and recommendation no later than June 1 of 2011.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. And do we need a vote on that, or is that just war for information?
(laughing).
All right, very good. That concludes my comments this evening. The next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First, wish each and every one of you and your families a happy new year. Hopefully, it was safe, and you had a very prosperous Christmas, and we can get about now paying off all the bills for all the Christmas presents we gave our kids. I'm going to ask, I don't know if Susan Banks or Karina is going to come forward. As the council knows, one of the community issues that are community priorities that I discussed at the last city council meeting was improved communications with the residents. And I'm happy to report that effective this afternoon, we initiated GovQA, which we had previously apprised the city council of. And Karina, I'm going to let you sort of walk us through how people at home and in the audience can access GovQA and what they're going to find when they get there.
Great, thank you very much. As Bob indicated, we did launch the GovQA. This is the opportunity for residents to go online at any time, 24/7, to look up information regarding the city's website, ask any particular questions, or as well, if they would like to report an issue or a problem to the city. Someone at home viewing this evening or in the audience could go to the Citizens Communications Center icon off of the city's main webpage. It will take us to the Citizen Communications Center. From here, anyone could find a frequently asked question. So for example, city staff for the past three months or so has created a list of over 275 frequently asked questions that we've received. We've categorized them and sub-categorized them, so that anyone that wanted to look something up regarding, let's just say, Correa and press the search key, could find five or six different questions specific to Correa. We have information on police, we have information on fire, we have information on the city manager.
Cell phone number. 24/7 contact information.
Everything but cell phone number.[575.72][575.72](laughing). We could always add that.
If it's not on there, I can read it off right here. Just to make sure all the citizens that are listening.
You're going to get your number.
There we got one.
A resident could ask a question. And I'm just quickly clicking through some of these icons for you to give you a brief idea of, a resident would have to enter their email address, what their question is potentially about. We have already created a number of categories for someone to fill out. They would ask their questions. If they had a picture of something that they wanted to attach, they could, they would submit the response. In turn, they would receive a work order saying, "Thank you for using GovQA. An employee would contact you within 48 hours."
While Karina is going through that, one of the things I really would ask the city council is if you get questions from residents, they call you, they stop you in the supermarket, on the train, whatever the case might be, let us know about what some of those questions are that they're asking. To just show you how dynamic this is, we had a conversation this morning about a question that has recently come up about why are the lights so bright on Waukegan Road? We've already started to prepare an answer to that, so that will be on there. So again, this will be a very dynamic instrument that we can use to help respond to any questions that come up. So if you hear of anything, please do not be shy about forwarding them on to us, and we can get it added to the GovQA system.
Thanks, Bob. We can also look for information regarding the community calendar, which would automatically link us to the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff Chamber of Commerce calendar. If we wanted to go to the city council committee of the whole Finance Committee agendas meeting in minutes, it would automatically take us to the Clerk base. Clerk base is the tool that a resident could look to find out any information regarding the city code, any meetings, agendas for city council, committee of the whole, or Finance Committee.
Will those agendas be posted promptly?
Yes.
When they're posted, around town Thursday or Friday before the meeting, they'll be posted here?
Yes, it is a third-party website. So basically, all we need to do is submit the file, and it immediately gets posted to the site. The only thing I would like to just remind you is when we originally went with the web QA, we only started out with the Finance Committee, with city council, as well as committee of the whole, because we wanted to test run to see if this was a really good product for us to move forward to in the future. If a resident wants to look at other committee agendas, meeting, boards and commissions, they would have to click the next icon, which would immediately take them to the city's website, and they could find any of that information there. I believe if we move toward a complete Clerk base application, it would, of course, then we'd only have one on top and keep everyone on one page. Of course, here, we can always check employment opportunities, go to the senior center slash Dickinson Hall website. For those of you that enjoy golf, you can click the golf course and automatically reserve your tee time from this main page. So overall, the city really wanted to allow residents to sign up for this, research whenever they want to, ask questions whenever they want to, in a centralized location, because what we had noticed before is we had a lot of information on our website, but sometimes it was difficult to locate. So with GovQA, this really has, and this really will be a benefit, because this will allow residents to go to the one-stop shopping. Do you have any questions in the interim?
I'll just make a comment, though. If somebody at the grocery store has a question, you can tell them they can check it right on their phone, right there, and not have to search for an answer.
You can go to your BlackBerry?
That's right. They can just, they can go right on their iPhone and get all the information they want.
Yes, you can.
Make a tee time.
And make a tee time.
That's right. Thank you, Karina.
Great presentation, Karina.
Oh, thank you.
And that completes my report this evening.
Thank you, Bob. And I just want to thank Karina, and I want to thank Susan Banks, because I know you've worked on this GovQA for quite a while, and I certainly urged you to roll it out on January 1, 2011, and get it going for a new year. And I think it's going to be a great opportunity for, again, for us to be able to find new ways to communicate with the residents. As we've talked about over the past year, how difficult it is many times to try to get to the right forum to communicate, and we're in a new technological state that I'm not even frankly up into, you know, with all the tweets and the twits and all that good stuff and Facebooks. And we're not all quite there on all of it, but this is one more tool to get information out that people can readily access, and hopefully, you know, city hall is not open or municipal service is not open, they can get on this at any time, 24/7, and get information. So I think it's a great idea, and thank you for all your hard work in rolling out. And I can see this just expanding and expanding over time to really be a very useful tool. So thanks again. And thank you, Bob, for your report. Our next item on the agenda is council committee reports. The first one being the Finance Committee report, Alderman Grumhaus.
Nothing to report.
Second being the Housing Trust, Alderman Marsh.
The Housing Trust had a meeting in December, and we had presentations from the Housing Trust down in Highland Park, as well as some good presentations from Lake Forest Bank and Trust about the type of support they provide, mortgage support and other support for affordable housing projects they're doing elsewhere around our community that could very well be applicable here. We also talked about, I know something council has raised a lot, which is looking into single-family homes and what we might be able to do about that, including potentially doing a community event around a rehab of a single-family home, both to raise awareness on affordable housing as well as to, you know, get people involved in it and really move forward on the project. So a couple of good ideas, and we'll be percolating them back to council for your consideration in the future.
Thank you, Alderman Marsh. Our next item is Laurel and Western Avenue Redevelopment Committee. Again, Alderman Marsh.
Nothing to report on that.
Next being the Legal Committee, Alderman Palmer.
No report.
Next being the Senior Resource Commission, Alderman Novit.
Would have been an interesting report, because I was going to announce who the news director was going to be, but thankfully was warned by Bob not to say that. But our next meeting is January 10. It's sad but happy, because it is Marge's, I believe, final meeting with Senior Resource. So again, that's coming up this Monday. But nothing aside from that to report yet.
Thank you, Alderman Novit. Next item being the Public Works Committee report, Alderman Luby.
Public Works right now, fortunately, most construction projects are over, but I did notice they are already out there filling patch holes this week, today. So that season has started filling the holes in the roads. The snow plowing has been off very busy over the Christmas holiday, yet you wouldn't realize it after the snow all melted away. It was some very costly snow. There's some questions concerning the lights that are now on on Waukegan Road. It's certainly changed. It's much safer than it's ever been, and it's quite a different look. I'd like to have Ramish come up here and answer some questions on why is there so many lights, and why have the lights been on 24 hours a day, which will be changed tomorrow? And he'll answer more, he's got more answers than you'd have questions on this project.
Thank you, Alderman Luby. Members of the council, happy new year. In Chicago, there's supposedly only two seasons, construction and snow, and we're still talking construction. It's not good, but...
They just started their construction today.
Yeah. Right. But as I said before, just to recap on the Waukegan Road streetscape, you know, it's a project, you know, which was more, again, to enhance the West Side Business District, and over the past three years, we have done small, small projects, again, to make, get more prominence on the West Side Business District compared to what we have on the East Side. One of the projects we just recently finished was the streetlights. There were questions regarding, you know, the way the lights are, the design, and also those luminaires and the combination of the luminaires and the overhead. For those residents, like, most of them are aware of it, but a lot of are not, like, you know, that Waukegan Road does belong to IDOT right away.
The luminaire is the lantern.
The lumine, when I say luminaire, it's the lantern-style lights. I'll just show a picture. So that's the city standard luminaire, and these are what we call is a cobra head, which is like a 30-foot pole, and these luminaires are set at 15-foot, which is the city standard. This is like the city standard. So as part of this task force, the original plan was to have these lantern-style lights along the entire corridor of this West Side Business District between Everett and Conway. We went to IDOT with that plan to have just the lantern-style lights. Obviously, IDOT, having jurisdiction, they have some, what they call is a photometric calculations on how much lighting should fall on the roadway and how much should fall on the sidewalk. So when we approached with them, these are like what we call 100-watt bulbs on these lantern-style lights. When they looked at the calculations, not much lighting was falling on the roadway. From IDOT perspective, safety is the utmost important for them, is like in terms of safety, not only for the pedestrians who are crossing the street, but also motorists as they enter this business district. Because if you recall, north and south of this district, there are no lights. So they have, you know, they have these standard spreadsheets, which they look into these calculations in the, when the car or observer comes into this district, lighting should be at a particular level, and it has to be consistent throughout that level. So they were not agreeing with City of Lake Forest standard of having these luminaire lights throughout. So we went back and forth with them in terms of the lighting calculation, and a compromise was reached was to have these 30-foot poles with overhead, but we don't need to have a lot of them wrong, and we can make a, what we call is a hybrid, where we can have combination of those overheads and the luminaire. So, and then we did go through the permit process, and we were able to get a reasonable lighting plan, which was acceptable to IDOT. If you notice, all the 30-foot overhead poles are primarily at the intersections. They are not, they are few in between, but most of them are right at the intersections. And also at the signalized intersections by Settler Square and at Everett, we have added the pedestrian push buttons, which were not there before. So that's another added element as part of the streetscape project. So now, again, for the, most of the calls we did get, they're all very positive, because right now, it brings prominence to the West Side Business District, and it's also pedestrianally, you know, pedestrian safety-wise, it has greatly increased in terms of what we have. So these are certain, some of the pictures. This is right at Settler Square intersection, as you can see. If you look at, along the corridor, they're all at the same level. It does provide that kind, what we call is a constant eyesight. And then these luminaires are mainly for the sidewalks, and the overhead are mainly for the roadways. I would not be this car making that illegal turn.
That's an illegal turn, I think, into McDonald's. Get that license off of there.
There's a reason why Joe is not here, but, and...
We'll get that one.
Okay, this was not on purpose, or he just happened to. This is, this is right, you know, going towards the jewel and Sunset Foods and Lols. Again, if you look at, again, I think the, we were trying to, you know, IDOT, satisfy IDOT's requirement of illumination and provide a safety consideration, and at the same time, understand that there was a focus group who had, you know, the streetscape element. So that's why that second light was added on those poles, and it does give you that consistent look, which did satisfy the main purpose of the West Side Business District and also did serve the IDOT's. These are the 100-watt bulbs, and these are the 400-watt bulbs. So this is what, like a typical, that's how it looks. Again, the lantern style, the original plan was like close to 100 lights. With this one, we were able to reduce to like 73. We have like 28, 25 to 28 tall ones, and then the lantern style are around 53. So these are some more pictures, but, so, that's the, that's the story behind the, it's, so it's not a City of Lake Forest. I know that Western Avenue, IDOT, just one more.
Yeah, we have them at Deer Path and at Woodline. We have higher standards as well.
Right, we, right, at the intersections, we are required. And then IDOT requires the poles to face each other, whereas Lake Forest, we can stagger the poles on either side, but IDOT requires us to face each other. So again, they are looking for more in terms of motorists and the pedestrian safety, whereas Lake Forest Downtown, we were, Lake Forest Downtown, the other reason is also Lake Forest, all the luminaires, I mean, all the lights on Lake Forest has what we call a refractor on top, which forces the light only to come down. Whereas, whereas in this one, the lantern, the light goes all around here, so that the sidewalk is illuminated. So there's a difference. And here, we got sidewalk on both sides, whereas in Downtown, it's only on one side. So, phew.
Ramish, if I may, you got all the positive responses. I've gotten all the negative responses. I've probably had 15 emails from third board residents saying that it looked like an operating room.
Did you let them know this in the fourth ward?
I did let them know, and I actually referred them to Alderman Luby and Palmer, so...
We allow them in our ward.
Don, as I was walking my dog through South Park, it is a lot brighter there.
You can see it now.
Yeah, we're happy for you. Thank you. Yeah. No, I was just going to say, is the 100, were the 100-watt bulbs required by IDOT? Or, again, it seems like such overkill to have both the lantern style and the high, high bulb, the high fixtures.
Right. I think the, Alderman Shonider, I think the 400-watt is primarily for the roadway, 100-watt provides what is for the sidewalk. Some of these lights are recessed like nine feet back, so I think the 15-foot, the lantern style is primarily for the pedestrian activity, which the light, again, focuses more around it and provides that, you know, illumination for the sidewalk.
I guess my question is, would it have been possible to not have quite the intensity on the lantern-style lights with a lower wattage on those? I, I think the feedback I'm getting from residents is they don't have so much worry about or concern about the highlights, it's the lantern-style lights and the intensity of those.
The 100-watt is the minimum, and I think those are what we call is a coated metal highlight. It does provide that glow, but I think one of the other aspects is also, like, we never had light before here, so, you know, I think it's trying to get those eyes getting used to it. But over time, I think once we are accustomed to those lighting and the light levels, I think it'll be okay. But as part of the lighting calculation, they required us to provide those 100 watts along with the 400 watt to satisfy their illumination levels. And there was a, again, we went back and forth for a year and a half on this discussions with IDOT. It was not a, it was not like a, you know, this is what they wanted.
It was pretty quick with the state. Quick turnaround there.
Yeah, we felt at least, you know...
The light bulbs will dim down, too, in what, six, eight months? A little bit?
Metal highlight, usually, most of the, like, that's what we are right now in a conversion for citywide. Right now, we have a lot of, you know, nickel cadmium, and we're going to convert to all metal highlight, which is...
When they first go in, everybody, there's, you know, they're really bright, and after a period of time, they do dim down a little bit, where they don't have quite as much glare on them.
Ramish, let me ask you a question, because this is a standard that we use in our parking lots, right behind city hall across the street. Are those 100?
They're all 100. They're all 100-watt metal highlight throughout the city. Downtown has a coated metal highlight, but they're all 100-watt metal highlight.
I think the situation is you've got a 400-watt overhead that's adding a lot more light to it.
Right, it is, but I think...
With the two of them.
Right, I agree, but I think it also gives that, I think it's more for the, you know, they're trying to manage the downtown, like, the West Side Downtown, kind of make it more appealing. It gives, and if you're driving down, I think, see this shot, if you look at it, not many people pay attention to that, but I think it gives that look as you drive down. So that's the compromise we had to reach with IDOT to satisfy their requirement in terms of lighting levels.
Well, you know it's not residential when you get to that area. So it does, it does point that out.
Right, which is what I think IDOT wants.
And it is safer. The crosswalks have never been, is safely lit out there. It's a whole, completely different on that end.
And Ramish, you mentioned as well, the comments I had, that the lights have been on 24/7, but that will change.
Right, the lights, the way the IDOT requires us, like, the lights be on for a week or so. The lights were turned on last week, and they're going to lit on, and then they had inspection done today. So after today, tomorrow, they're going to go back to what we call is a photo cell. So there's one photo cell controls all these lights. Whenever it gets dark, automatically the lights light up. So right now, they were inspected this morning by IDOT. They were okay with it. They want to make sure that the lights are on 24/7, and all the fixtures and all the components of the fixtures are all working, and that's what was going on, so.
Ramish, I just want to tell you, as a resident of the fourth ward, I've heard nothing but positive comments. I've had a number of people call me and say they look great, that they laid up, you know, the West Side Business District, they do what we, I think we intended them to do. And I also had a number of people that came by and visited over the holidays from out of town and said, "What'd they do on Waukegan Road? It looks great." So I've heard nothing but positive. I think it looks great, and I think it's really a nice enhancement to the whole business district and, you know. For me, as someone getting older too, driving, I think it's wonderful. You can, you can see out there.
Just wait till you see the Christmas lights on those poles next year. So, thanks.
I will, from that, that's it I got. I can't comment on that.
Thank you, though, for a very good report on that. And that's the end of the public works report.
Thank you, Alderman Luby. Our next item is the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee, which I'll comment on. And I just asked Karina real quick, one, we did not have a meeting in December because of the holiday schedule. We will re-meet again in... We will re-meet again in this month, in January, but if you could just, again, give us a brief update on the status of the warming shelters at the West Side Train Depot.
Sure. You are correct, we did not have a meeting in December. Our next meeting is the 24th of January. With respect to the warming shelters, they should be delivered to the city by the 18th of January. I was hoping that we would have them by the end of December. However, they were on back order. So if I get them, hopefully by the 18th of January, we can have them up by the end of January, which, there's still time, there's still winter left, so people can utilize the shelters.
Do we still need them? Isn't the heat of the light enough to, heat of the lights enough to keep people there?
Well, if I make the train tonight, I'll let you know.
We didn't add the extra lighting element in those.
Just doesn't get out of the rain, though. That's the only problem. Thanks, Karina. That concludes the council committee reports. The next item on the agenda is comments by council members. Any additional comments? No. The next item on the agenda, therefore, is opportunity for public to address the city council and non-agenda items. Anyone wish to address the council? No. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are three items on the agenda this evening. I'll read those off, and we can take them as you wish. The first one being approval of authorized invoices and payrolls. The second being an authorization of treasurer's warrants to meet expenses of January 2011. And again, the approval of minutes from the December 6, 2010 regular meeting.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Woodman?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Schonheider?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
J.K., two days, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. Our next item on the agenda is ordinances. First being a consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 52, the Housing Trust Fund of the City Code. This is for final approval, and this will be presented by me. I get the straw on this one, huh, Kathy? This came up earlier, as we had in the end of 2010, we had the first approval on this, and we're back again now for final approval. Basically, what we're doing is trying to increase the Housing Trust. Right now, we have Alderman Marsh and one other member on that committee. We'd like to expand that to up to seven bodies, and then just more, with more definition, outline the role of that trust fund as well, which has been included. We've gone over it. I know that the city attorney, Vic Filippini, has made a few adjustments, as we spoke about last time. The revised ordinances beginning on page 21 of your packet. I will entertain any comments or motion to approve. Motion to approve? Second. This is a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Woodman?
Nay.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Nay.
Alderman Schonheider?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Six, yes, two days, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. The next item on the agenda is new business. Any additional items?
Can I ask one question on the Housing Board? What is the timing to appoint new members and get that moving?
Timing is, we're hoping to get the names in by the end of the month, if at all possible. We've been talking to individuals. I know I tried to talk to some more individuals over the holiday, but was not as successful due to the holiday schedules and vacations. But I believe, Bob, as we're, we'd like to get most of those names back and try to get them in here by the end of, for the next council meeting, if possible.
Yeah, I think there have been a couple of names that have been submitted either by members of the Housing, current Housing Trust, or some members of the city council. I would encourage you to, if you have any thoughts and ideas, please submit those names, and we can bring them back at the January 18 meeting for consideration.
Is there, will there be a vehicle, Mr. Merida or Bob, to have city residents who are interested also submit their names, whether it's, is it through the caucus volunteer form? Is it some other method? I know there are other residents out there that also raise their hand that have said they'd like to get involved, so it'd be worthwhile at least to have all those in the group to explore.
Sure. That's a great question. It actually applies to some of the earlier items on the agenda as well. On the city's website, as well as on the caucus website, is what's called a volunteer profile. Any resident that's interested in serving on any board or commission, whether it's the Housing Trust, Gordon, whatever, should go on there if they have an interest in participating, and fill that out, and either submit it here to City Hall, and we will make sure it gets to the caucus, or submit it directly to the caucus. And I know in speaking with some members of the caucus recently, the, they are desperately looking for people to volunteer, to either be on caucus committees, or to throw their name in the hat for consideration to be on some of the boards and commissions. So, I think while we encourage people through the dialogue to participate, if you run into anybody, really encourage them to go either on the city's website or on the caucus website.
Great, thanks, Bob.
Is there any sort of job description that goes along with some of these? Would you be looking for technical expertise, or real estate development expertise, or, I mean, that sort of thing with any of these jobs? Like on the, like for the Housing Trust, is there a, I can't remember back on boards and commissions if there was an, if they were looking for a particular group or things that I was part of.
I guess that's a good question. Is there, when we ask for volunteer profiles, that we don't, do we have a way to designate the type of expertise we're looking for when they, when we look for those boards and commissions?
Well, I'll talk in general, and then I'll let Vic talk about the Housing Trust particularly, and what the ordinance says about that. But I know that in the past, the caucuses tended to reach out to the mayor, city council, or members of the existing board or commission to say, who's coming off, what expertise are you looking for? Might be architectural, it might be land planning, it might be whatever. And so they will generally have an idea of the skill set that they're looking for. Unfortunately, though, there are times that those people aren't available, and so then you're looking for the best candidate as to whoever that might be.
As you just pointed out, that it's in the Section 52-4C, that it does describe the qualifications, and I missed it.
Right, one of the things that we've done is the ordinance...
I don't know if that would be available for someone looking at it, so...
Right, the ordinance that you just passed did offer some refinement as to the types of skill sets for the Housing Trust Fund Board. And we have that in some of our commissions and boards, but not in all of them. And in part, it depends on the nature of the commission. For example, the Historic Preservation Commission does have similar types of identified skill sets, but not so much so in things such as the Plan Commission or the Zoning Ward of Appeals, because those are things that literally every resident has some impact, or is impacted, I should say, by what they do, and has the requisite interest in skill sets for that. That's not to say that there aren't some things that we look for, but those are more selection criteria rather than performance criteria.
I do think it would be helpful if the caucus or the city did sort of post for each of the boards, I mean, obviously, you know, for the council, which tends to be a position where, you know, people come up from different areas, although it's obviously not a requirement, because it's an elective position, elective position. But, you know, I do get questions, is it Alderman, well, you know, tell me about what I'd do on, you know, if I was interested in working on the planning commission, or, you know, HPC. And I think it would be helpful if we had sort of a standard document that says, you know, this is what they do, and here are the, here's the job description, and this is the type of background that we're looking for.
I think it's a very good point. We can work with the caucus.
Is that something that we could incorporate in the GovQA? I know you're shaking your head, so I assume that would be a...
She's taking notes out there now.
That'd be a great opportunity to...
Good idea.
All those down, is there anything else?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Okay, good.
Wonderful.
Good, good comments.
Sometimes, though, we don't really want to tell them what they have to do, because then they won't want to apply. That's like when, you know, when you want to be on the city council, don't worry, it's not much work at all. You don't get very many phone calls, right?
One or two meetings...
That's right. See, you guys bought it.
Any other additional items for council discussion? No?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.